C D?
Here.
Mayor Colicott.
Here.
All present.
Bob? Okay, to open our council meeting, we continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are pleased that Bob Brockmire has accepted our invitation. We especially like to honor our veterans as distinguished citizens as their efforts in harm's way have protected our freedoms, including our right to recite the pledge. Bob Brockmire was born and raised in Los Angeles and attended USC on a Navy ROTC scholarship. Bob graduated from USC and received his commission as an ensign in the United States Navy in June 1963. And in December 1963, Bob and Barbara were married. Bob went to flight training, became a helicopter pilot, serving on two cruises on the USS Hornet during the Vietnam War. On July 29, 1967, Bob was witness to a major tragedy onboard the aircraft carrier USS Forrestal. At the time, the Forrestal was engaged in combat operations in the Gulf of Tonkin during the Vietnam War. An electrical anomaly caused the discharge of a Zuni rocket from an F-4 Phantom parked on the flight deck, triggering a chain reaction of explosions. The deadly chain reaction began when the rocket hit a parked and armed A-4 Skyhawk, piloted by a young Lieutenant John S. McCain, rupturing its fuel tanks and feeding fires that enveloped planes parked on the deck. The impact also sent a thousand-pound bomb into the fire, which cooked off and killed the fire deck chief and the first wave of trained firefighters. The explosions blew holes in the flight deck and had half of the large ship on fire at one point. It took a full day before the fires could be fully contained, leaving 134 sailors killed and 161 injured. This was the worst U.S. carrier fire since World War II. As Bob was the only available helicopter pilot onboard at the time, he was able to get airborne and provide information to support the firefight. He also took photographers into the air to record the event, and the photos were displayed in Life magazine. After Bob completed active military service in 1969, he remained in the reserves for another 20 years, retiring from the Navy with a rank of captain. Bob joined United Airlines in 1969, where he flew for 32 years, retiring in 2001 as a Boeing 747-400 captain. Bob and Barbara moved to Villa Park in 1972, where they raised four sons. Three sons graduated from Villa Park High School and one from Servi. Two sons graduated from USC and two from Chapman. Bob and Barbara are now the proud grandparents of nine grandchildren. Barbara is active in the Villa Park Women's League and the Assistance League of Orange, and Bob is also active in several organizations, including the American Aviation Historical Society. He's a docent at the General William Lyon Museum at John Wayne Airport, and USC NROTC Alumni Association, and the USC Half-Century Trojan Club. Bob and his lovely Barbara will be celebrating their 55th wedding anniversary in December. They continue to enjoy spending time with their family and friends in Plain Bridge. I'm now honored to introduce Bob Brockmire to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join with me.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Bob, please step forward. We'd like to take a picture with you. Is that you? Okay. Thank you. or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers, and speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. We now go to presentations, and the first presentation is the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
I would comment that Lieutenant Rich is indisposed on a personal illness, but he has indicated to me via text today that he intends to be back on the job shortly. He is hospitalized at the moment, but he'll be back quickly, so Sergeant Feeney will capably handle the report, he said.
Capably, well, I'll try. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I have the crime statistics for May of 2018 for the city of Villa Park. It was actually a fairly low crime month, which is very good. We have only one residential burglary for the month, and that happened at 1700 Block of Serrano, and it was a home that's under construction, where some construction equipment was removed from the property with no signs of forced entry. There was probably some kind of entry made through an area that was being constructed. There was one grand theft during the month in the 18,000 block of Roseanne Circle. There were several items of interest: iPads, guitars, and numerous other items that were removed from an unlocked vehicle. And there were two petty thefts: one from right here in the Santiago Plaza, shoplifter from a store that was over here, as well as the 19,000 block of Mesa, multiple items removed from an unlocked vehicle, again. So there was one significant call for the month. I'm certain that you all were probably informed about this. There was some kind of threat that was made over social media posts to the Sierra Villa Middle School. We immediately sent out our SMART team, along with a couple of other deputies, to investigate this, and found out that there was no credible threat in that post. So there were 396 total calls in the city of Villa Park for the month of May, four traffic accidents, two non-injury, and two hit-and-run vehicle collisions, and 44 traffic citations were written, and 24 parking citations. So we're going to, we've been upping the enforcement on some of the major roads, stop signs, and things like that, because people tend to just kind of crank through those. So with the amount of people that you have here on your lovely streets, walking around and getting some exercise, bicyclists and everything else, we've been stepping up some of that enforcement on some of those stop signs. So, and that concludes my report. Is there any questions from the council?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've let, just as a point, the sergeant is leaving not because he's got nothing. He does, he's been on duty since 4:00 a.m. this morning, so he asked me if he could leave. So I'm just reporting the sheriff is not bailing on us for lack of interest, but for fatigue factor here.
Stay for a moment. Make sure there are no questions on other items. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your report. Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members, city staff and residents. My name is Ron Roberts. I'm one of your battalion chiefs assigned here to the city of Villa Park. For my report, first tonight, I'd like to wish Lieutenant Rich a speedy recovery. Hope to see him soon. For this last reporting period, as you can imagine, the majority of our calls for service have been for emergency medical services. I'm happy to report that we did not have any structure fire in the city at this, during this time, which causing damage or any sort of injury. I would like to report that your firefighters from Station 23 were part of the initial attack resources on the Santiago fire. We, thanks to our command center, were able to backfill that station to continue to provide paramedic and fire service protection for the city. And for my safety message tonight, obviously, I saw one of the stands as I drove in tonight. July 4 will be upon us in about a week. I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday, and please be careful, please be cognizant of your situation, what's going on around you. If you choose to use fireworks, remember that those items are hot, and when you're done with them, please either have a pail of water or a pail of dirt and be able to ground that firework. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on, you do.
Okay, now we move on to council member meeting attendance reports, and the first is the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
That would be...
Did you miss the library?
Yeah, library.
Oh, the library, I'm sorry, my favorite one.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Samantha Smith, branch manager of the Villa Park Library, and I'm here tonight with the librarians' report. So this month was very exciting regarding our building project. We have lots of updates. We did get new paint. As of last Friday, the library's been painted, and we've taken out some shelving and moved our computer area and created a designated children's space. Everything is really starting together, and we have an estimated completion date of mid-July. At that point, we invite everyone to stop by now and view our progress, and also stop by later on in July and view the redesigned, beautified library. The summer reading program kicked off last Monday, on Monday, June 18. This program runs from June 18 through July 29, and since the 18th, we've had 146 children, teens, and adults sign up for the reading program. This is a great number, and we're very excited by the turnout. This reading program is free, and it's easy to participate in. You can track the number of books you read, the number of minutes you read, or the number of activities that you complete. You can track your progress on a paper log or online. This program is presented by the Villa Park Library and OC Public Libraries, and it's sponsored by the Friends of the Villa Park Library. Please contact us if you have questions about this program or if you would like to sign up. As part of our summer reading kickoff, we welcomed special guests from OC Sheriff's Department. Deputies read stories and talked about summer safety. We had 52 people attend this awesome program. Everyone enjoyed the snacks and refreshments that were provided courtesy of the National Charity League. Also, part of our first week of summer was our library luau. This event featured hula instruction and a craft, and 85 people attended the program. We have some, we had some awesome programs already this summer, and we're only about on week two, and we also have some wonderful upcoming programs as well. On Saturday, July 14, at 11:00 a.m., we will be hosting a program by the Orange County Master Gardeners. As part of the University of California Cooperative Extension Master Gardener Program, master gardeners perform volunteer services, and they come out and share their knowledge and information with the public. This high-quality professional program is free to attend, and the topic of this particular program will be succulents, which is really popular right now. This presentation will cover the history and origin of succulents, as well as their care, feeding, and propagation. If you love gardening and succulents, or if you would just like to learn something new, we invite you to come to the library on Saturday, July 14, at 11:00 a.m. On Thursday, July 19, we'll be presenting a genealogy program for kids. It's never too early to start learning about your family history. This program is designed for elementary-school-aged children, but everyone's welcome, and it will be a great introduction for kids to learn their families' histories and stories. This program will feature some basic genealogy instruction, an enthusiastic discussion about the stories, recipes, and history that makes each family different, and it will be a fun and informative craft project provided as well. So there's a lot going on at the library this summer, and we really encourage everyone to drop by, attend a program, check out a book, or sign up for the summer reading program. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, now we'll move on to council member meeting attendance reports, and the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
That would be me. The Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board met last Thursday, and at the meeting, we held two public hearings on proposed continuation of assessments for both Assessment Districts 1 and 2. And we approved the adoption of fiscal budget, fiscal year 2018, 2019, operating capital and revenue budget. And we adopted a resolution creating and establishing a data application specialist position, as well as we gave a performance evaluation for the general manager, gave him a raise and a bonus, and extended his contract. And prior to the meeting, the Budget and Finance Committee had a presentation on Section 115 Trust by Pension Obligation by PARIS, and this will be presented later to the full board. That concludes my report. Is there any question?
I have a question. Are we in Assessment Area 1 or 2?
What is Assessment 1 or 2?
Is Villa Park in either of those areas?
We're in both of those.
So did our rates go up?
Are they what?
Did our property rates, did our assessment go up on our property taxes?
Section, Assessment 2 did go up.
It did.
Because there's a maximum that they can have for, and we've always been under the maximum, but this year, they decided to go up to the maximum, but they didn't, all of the operation, they're going to take the excess, and they're going to use it for a billing fund, because they feel at some point in the future, they're going to have to do something with the billing they have there, or they're going to have to find new billing.
So...
Currently, they have about $6 million in their billing fund.
So how much on each of our property taxes are we talking? A dollar, $10 a year? Do you have a distant idea?
No, it's, it went up to, went up from about $6.70.
Okay.
It went up about $0.50.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next report is the Orange County Sanitation District, and that's me. On May 23, I represented the city at the Board of Directors meeting in Fountain Valley. And at this meeting, Greg Seaborn, councilman from Fullerton, and David Sauvier, councilman from Stanton, were re-elected as chairman and vice chairman of the board. On June 6, I participated in the meeting of the Sanitation District Operations Committee. In addition to routine operations and maintenance items, the committee received an update on the options for relocation of the headquarters and laboratory buildings down in Fountain Valley. Any questions? Okay, Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening. On May 24, I attended the Board of Directors meeting and a special meeting of the Orange County Fire Authority. The OCFA Board voted to approve and adopt an updated cost reimbursement rate schedule. They received and filed a procurement policy and manual. They approved and authorized staff to adjust the city of Santa Ana's service charge to exclude the impact of the Orange County Fire Authority's accelerated pension payments from 2015, 2016, and forward. They approved the 2018-2019 budget, which in round numbers consisted of $376 million in operating expenses, $49 million in other appropriations, $36.7 million in an operating contingency. They also authorized a response to the grand jury report. In essence, that response stated that the Orange County Fire Authority and its Board of Directors should work with the city of Irvine to find value-added items to make up for disproportionate or inequitable service fees that Irvine is being assessed, given that it's a structural fire fund city. And then there was a small briefing on potential legislation out of Sacramento, including Assembly Bill 1912. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
No meeting? Budget and finance?
No meeting.
Community development and public safety?
We got city schools.
No, there's no meeting until September.
And I had two more bits. Sorry, I had to turn the page.
I'm sorry.
And it's my fault. I apologize. The Orange County Fire Authority also met on June 7 and June 20. The June 7 meeting was the Orange County Fire Authority Human Resources Committee, and closed session items were discussed, so there's really nothing to report at this point on that. On June 20, I attended a special meeting for the Board of Directors, and the OCFA Board voted to address a letter, albeit, let's call it a demand letter, from the city of Irvine, and the Board voted to continue to pursue keeping Irvine within the umbrella of the Joint Powers Authority and a member of the Fire Authority, hopefully through 2030. Voted to continue to aggressively pay down unfunded liabilities, as they have, and this is all done in the response of a letter, and continued to negotiate in good faith over value-added items to offset the inequities that I previously mentioned, but did vote to reject two very large items that Irvine was hoping to get. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for missing the city schools.
My fault, too.
I left up, update my notes. City schools advisory?
There is no meeting till September.
Okay. Community development?
The Community Development Committee met June 18, Monday evening. There were a few items on the agenda which we will, we've referred to the council tonight for, that are on the agenda for tonight. There was a variance on one property and also a zoning code amendment that we've referred to the council for action tonight, so.
Thank you. Are there any other, any questions? Okay, now move on to human resources.
No meeting.
No meeting? City schools advisory?
No meeting.
No meeting?
No meeting.
Okay. Friends of Villa Park Library? Let's see, we just had a report by the librarian, so we'll go with that. Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee, the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee met on June 21. Key items of discussion included the current Verizon project to install fiber optic cables. In this discussion, committee members provide valuable insight to city staff regarding the backfilling of utility excavations. Also, the forthcoming update of the general plan and committee participation in addressing infrastructure management was discussed. Any questions? Okay. Investment advisory?
No meeting.
Law enforcement advisory?
On June 11, the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee met. Of note, Lieutenant Rich unfortunately was not able to attend, and we did not have a member of the Orange County Sheriff's Department there due to the emergency in Santiago Canyon, 241 area for the fire. So there was quite a bit of detail that unfortunately was not reported at that meeting. General housekeeping matters were discussed, and nothing of significance was recommended by the committee.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Councilman, I noticed today on social media, and I saw a couple of emails today regarding National Night Out. Have we, are we in the process of notifying the city, all the members of the, because part of the emails were sectionalized, they didn't go out to the general public, they went out to basically Neighborhood Watch and things like that, and there's postings on Facebook about National Night Out and what's going on? Have we, are you involved, and are we notifying residents of Villa, the other residents of Villa Park of what's going on?
I can speak to that. We received, we had some confirmation with the Sheriff's Department just last week. It'll be August 7, Tuesday, August 7. The, we're working with our community specialists from the Sheriff's Department. I believe that the Neighborhood Watch sent that out on their own today. It wasn't part, we will be organizing a whole campaign, if you will, of information to be put out. That came out in advance of anything that I was aware of as a separate organization. But we will be, and we've coordinated, and we're working with the Sheriff's Department to ensure that we have a successful evening.
Okay.
And are they going to charge us for that? That was one of the issues that we discussed when they gave us the 13% increase, that this is an event that they put on. This is not an event that we request.
Sergeant, I mean, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Rich, I didn't mean to downgrade him, but he and I are having those discussions, they sort of got interrupted just last week with his health issues, but we've had discussions about deployment. The first matter of thing was discussing, is there a date that works and et cetera? They do it at all the cities, and it is a, it a date that typically is out to recognize the work of the Sheriff's Departments and law enforcement throughout the country, actually. So we've talked to them about that, and if there is an expense, it will be minimalized, and that's something that we've talked about within our budget.
I'd like to...
We have, we have events that, I know the foundation has not done a very good job of alerting the public as to when certain things like sanitors and things like that are going to take place, so I was concerned about the date, making sure we had enough advance notice that people know enough in time, because there was a good attendance last year, participated in it, so.
I think Robbie brings up a great point. I think some of the issue was that they were bouncing around a couple of different dates, and they didn't have that finalized until within the last week. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
But that's a, it's a great point. Thank you.
But National Night Out is the same day, it's the same day.
There was some, there was a request to move that to a later date, because August around Villa Park can be somewhat quiet, so the thought being on August 7, they might not have the turnout if they pushed it to, the thought was maybe September, when school was back in session, and there might be a larger turnout. However, the sheriff, that's where discussions went, and the sheriff has requested it to be consistent with the nationwide celebration. So that's where it landed, and that discussion just happened, like I said, over the last week.
Who owns that event for the city? I mean...
It's a sheriff.
It's a discussion with the sheriff.
No, I understand that, but I mean, I'm talking about coordination and things like that, because it is taking place right out there.
We, we provide, to an extent, we help provide insurance coverage for the events out there, but as far as coordinating the booths and things like that, that's done by the community worker from, from the Sheriff's Department and the Neighborhood Watch, the community programs. We have limited involvement from the city perspective, as far as that goes.
Okay, because I saw emails from Rotary and several others that were thinking about booths and all kinds of things like that, and I'm sure the foundation will as well, but I want to make sure that the information gets out properly, and everybody's involved, dates are set properly, and we make everyone aware of it equally.
You will be seeing a flyer coming out later this week. We typically, they walk, we'll be getting it all over in the city websites and the feeder, and there'll be signs going up as well out on the center. You'll see those going up as well. Typically, we like to put those signs up about three weeks before the events happen. Otherwise, people sort of get glazed over them after a while, and you sort of go oblivious to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public safety?
Public safety, no meeting.
Okay. Public Works and Engineering. On June 15, the Public Works and Engineering Committee received updates and discussed preventive maintenance of infrastructure, updates on street repair projects, and updates on our stormwater permit compliance. Community Services Foundation?
Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum last month to have an official meeting, so it did not take place. There's one tomorrow night. You know, I understand future dates for Santa and Boat Parade and things like that have not been set in stone, but they will be tomorrow night. We will publish that and get that out on the foundation website, and also work with Steve to get it out to the city.
Those are important dates.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we turn to public comments. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Provide that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Do we have any, city manager, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we've received three cards, and I'm not sure the order they received, because they were on my, on the desk here, so I'll just simply read them as they're showing here. First one is Donald McGuinness.
Yes. Welcome.
I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I've been here before. This is my second time before the council regarding the problem with traffic on Serrano between Nichols and Santiago. I also brought it to the attention of the city in 2014 via an email, and I'm back again. I do appreciate you, folks. I appreciate the service that you give us, and I know that this is almost a voluntary situation, as far as you're concerned. We've lived here since 1972. Right now, I have two children, two great-grandchildren at Serrano, no, Saravilla, they just came from somewhere, and one person at Villa Park High. I'm just really continuing to be concerned about the speed of the traffic on Serrano. My point here is that I think in the past, the door has always been closed after the, after the horse is out, and I think that happened, I know, on Serrano, when a couple of people went through the block wall at the end of the street, and ultimately, you saw, I don't know who approved it, but ultimately, you put up barriers there, and we haven't had any problems since then. In addition to that, I've been told that the signal at Nichols and Taft was put in after two people were killed. You know, I just, my concern is that somebody is going to get injured or killed because of the way people drive on that street. They use it as a transit. There are several ways I think it could be controlled. One is by speed bumps. I don't think that's particularly popular, but that would help, or you could put in a stop sign possibly at Bryn Mawr, and by the way, I live on Bryn Mawr, 9611. Or the police could be there more often. I don't see them very often. I walk my dog every night, I walked tonight, and there are quite a few people speeding up and down the street. The school... Or the police could be there more often. I don't see them very often. I walk my dog every night, I walked tonight, and there are quite a few people speeding up and down the street. The, school is out now, but there are a number of events going on at the, at the, the park there and so you still have people on a regular basis that are there. I think most of the problem is possibly in early morning when people are going to work and in the evening. So, again, I appreciate your willingness to let me speak. I don't think I'll be back here again. I hope that something will be done. Thanks so much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Steve, for the other speakers, could we have them introduce themselves and also give their address where they're-
Sure. Sure. Bob Wolf.
I'm Bob Wolf. I live at 9642 Dotson Way, Villa Park. I've been there for 42 years. First of all, I was here about some street improvements, which you guys finally got taken care of as far as the patching of the streets. But I have a real bad feeling about the way that, that the city is working on the street repairs and, and doing the repairs. Our street has never been serviced the 40 years I've been there, other than when I came in and complained about the, there was a storm drain that was put in that street and the trench that was put in has not, lost all its compaction all the way down. They came in and fixed the area in front of my house, which I'm grateful for, but there's more damage on down, all the way from Serrano up halfway up Dotson Way. You know, you've got a, two guys that really work hard and the public works in this city. They do a lot. But I don't see any planning for improvements in, in doing the maintenance on these streets. It doesn't make any sense to me. The longer we go, the more it's going to cost to get them done. And you come in and you patch and you do this, you could probably, what it costs to patch that street, you go to probably ground the street and, and redid it. But I, I don't understand, you, you guys have really got to start thinking about doing the, these streets are not in good shape. And they're, the compaction on that trench is bad. People walk up and down that street, there's going to be somebody trip and hurt themselves. So I really think that there should be some planning from the city as far as the maintenance on the streets. I don't know when the, I've never seen any of the streets in Villa Park sealed, seal-coated. City of Orange does their streets on a regular basis. They, you know, and I just really think that we ought to think about, I mean, we can put these fancy signs up, they're beautiful, it says Villa Park and everything else. But the, the people that live here and have lived here for a long time, we have a, I think we need to work towards some kind of a program to maintain our streets in a better than what we're doing. The engineer that we have, I guess he's here two days a week. When I got, originally got into the problem, he came out and said, well, as soon as we get a patch crew out here, well, it took another year and a half or two years, finally I came in and complained again and we finally got it fixed. But we, we need to start thinking about a maintenance program for these streets and start getting them in shape because it's going to cost the city a lot more money when you go. I'm in the construction business, I can tell you that it's not going to be cheap if we keep going. I appreciate it. Thank you very much and you guys have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
General Berry, retired?
Lieutenant General Ed Berry, 18371 Adams Ranch Road, here in Villa Park. Oh, doing aside, I love the Navy, except when the Army-Navy game. Because I went to West 40. But I did go to USC. Some of the subject, I, I would like to really congratulate the group here on the, but there's a misbalance in my opinion, very similar to the last speaker, on, on what you take care of near term and what you take care of far term. Now, in my military background, I spent a lot of time managing weapon systems, building them and managing them. The cost of the weapon system is not so much the cost, although people talk about millions of dollars for an airplane or something like that. The cost is really in the lifecycle cost or the logistics cost to maintain the system. That's where the money, it billions and billions of dollars to maintain a system. Now, a couple of years ago, I think the council had contracted out and we did a, taking a look at the infrastructure and the same speaker, the roads. Now, the criteria used for that was a measurement technique that basically says if you're beyond 50, the road really needs to be resurfaced. That doesn't mean come in with oil, that basically means come in, scrape it down and put a new layer, a hot top or tire on it. You know, that's money. That's a lot of money if we don't plan for that. And so, in the military, what we always did, we had the famous five-year plan. Now, did we do everything in the five year? No, we didn't, but we had a five-year plan and we put something in the budget every year for maintenance. We knew what needed to be done, we knew, basically knew the life expectancy of the system and so we budgeted for that. And what I, when I look at your plan, I don't see that. I really don't see that, that you've taken those, those roads, the worst roads that they have, the ones over 50, and there I come with some degree of prejudice because one of those road is mine, Adams Ranch Road, as well as Adams Circle, which is off of Adams Ranch Road. But I would hope that the council will go back and look at the budget and put in some sort of long-range planning on how to fix the roads, maybe do so many miles a year or something like that, whatever the criteria may be. But if you don't attack it, as the previous speaker says, it's really going to cost us an awful lot of money and it's, it's, whether it becomes a crisis or not, I really don't know. But the study shows that and so it really needs to be done. I think you've done an excellent job, Diana to compliment to you, and the beautification, it's been budgeted and, and hey, it looks pretty good. Looks good. But at the same time, the companions of that, the balance for that is the long-term infrastructure and that's not in the plan. And so I would really like to have you go back and consider what we can do, do to put long-term planning in to fix the roads based upon the priority of, of the need for those. And perhaps, you know, maybe, maybe some of our Villa Park wives or maybe some of the, the clubs here, maybe they might look to try to help us out with some of the beautification processes also. But in the meantime, the roads need to be repaired, you've got nothing in the budget and you're not doing the long-range planning. And I really believe that's part of your responsibility and I appreciate if you would consider that and take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other speaker cards? City, city manager?
No, we've received no other cards.
Okay. So, we'll now move on to public hearings. Our first hearing is to review and waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
Agenda item number two is the monthly effort we make to expedite the movement of our, of our agenda items. That's just waiving the reading of all, waiving the reading in full of all our ordinances, resolutions and meeting minutes. And basically, I would recommend approval.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff? No. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none. Council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
I may, I'll move the recommendation.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please vote.
It passes by a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Thank you. Our next hearing is the consideration of the fiscal year 2018-19 operating budget and seven-year capital improvement program, appropriating revenue and establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal 2018-19 and amending the salaries and benefits resolution. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Councilman, this is the fiscal year 1819 operating budget capital improvement plan, begin, the fiscal year begins this July 1st later on this week. Basically, the development of budgets is premised on two primary objectives. It's fulfilling our legal obligations set forth by state law and then also advancing the efforts of the city's vision, of the council's vision as set forth in the strategic plan that was approved last December. With that being said, we conducted a, two study sessions, May 8th and June 5th of this year, to review and discuss the assumptions that we would build into the budget. As a result of those meetings, we have a budget presented for you. It is also online in full, should anyone be interested. They can get full copies online. The budget itself is, has revenues of $4.6 million and we have a available fund balance of 1.6 million, basically funds $6.2 million worth of expenditures for the coming year. That being said, the general fund, we will also have an, a, undesignated reserve after the contribution that's estimated about 19,000 this year, of 1.5 million or 1.55 million, which would put us at 46%. While 46% would sound like a, a very healthy number, it is, 1.5 million is, is not a very big number. So keep in mind, 46% is a very big number as a percentage of our general fund. It is not a big number in and of itself. As you know, a major capital project is typically between 500,000 to a million or, or more. So, one major capital project can sort of, a catastrophe can deal with that. We are, we have, as part of this effort, we have calculated our GAN limit, which is required by law that we do not exceed that. We are well under that. The calculation is, is presented in the budget here. The two actions will be proposed for the budget, but before I would get there and sort of in response to the speakers here, I would like to say, on page 106, there is the five-year plan. And if you do look at that, you'll see there is 950,000 for, is it 952, for the-
Storm drain.
Street improvements. Yeah, about 900, it's 950,000, for street improvements, designating 18 streets, or 19 streets, I believe, Akram, if I'm correct. 19 streets that we, the, the contract was let last month with RJ Noble, so you will see resurfacing on 19 streets starting probably late July or August. The, the general is correct, we operate on a PCI. So this evening, there is a pavement, an update on that listing and you'll see that. Our plan, as you go forward with that, there is an estimated 500,000 each year, is that right, Frank? 500,000 a year dedicated for that purpose. Well, obviously, I would like to have more, when you keep in mind, we only have 4.6 million dollars in revenues, we have to weigh that into what our operating expenses are. I would also like to indicate that one of the expenses that we do have to deal with that has upset our budget significantly and not, not, it's a natural disaster, was the storms of January 2017, at which time we had a storm drain failure. We were hoping at the time to get FEMA monies to reimburse us, FEMA being Federal Emergency Management Agency monies. We will, does not look like we will get those monies, so that would be a direct hit of close to, just under a million dollars to our general fund. That upsets any major capital plan we might have had or whatever. You will see tonight that one of the items on the agenda, a separate item, does incorporate $40,000 worth of a change order to give to the same firm that is doing our street maintenance to do some crack sealing, which will preserve some of our streets to the extent that we can until we get back on track with a, a more regulated pattern of expenditures. So I just wanted to share with you that and for those speakers so that they could reference, it's on page 106 of our budget document. The action tonight, the council has two actions. We're required by law to adopt a budget by July 1st so we have appropriations and we can pay our bills as of this Fri, this Saturday, I believe, Saturday. There's two actions. The first action is to adopt resolution 2018-3431, which basically sets the appropriations and allows us to have a budget. Item number two is the resolution 2018-3432, which is the revised salary and benefit resolution, which, which delineates the salaries and, and actions for the city. It is important to note that our revenue estimates are conservative and our expenditure projections are realistic. So in other words, we've estimated our revenue's low and our expenditure's high. We are coming in under budget this year, we have a valen, a balanced budget and I believe the city overall is in a very favorable position, but as we've seen with disasters in January, you know, last year, any disaster could change that situation fairly quickly. So you have to, you have to understand that that is a reality out there. We only have a $6 million budget in the big scheme of things, that's not a lot of money. We spend about 1.8 million of that $6 million on law enforcement services alone. So, putting it all in perspective, it is a lot to be said there. Staff and I are available to answer any questions. I would like to just, as a, as a moment, we transferred our finance director, we had a new, we had our last one leave, longtime finance director, we had a new one come on board with Frank, we're very fortunate. Frank's very experienced. And we had both Eileen Doe and Tui, who were at, spent the last month basically putting together things that Michelle had done for years and known it in and out. We had to basically reinvent and learn this all, so I'd like to thank them publicly for all their work in getting you something done on time, actually in advance of the publishing notice. So I'm, I'm very proud. We did something a little different this year, we talked about assumptions prior to putting, just giving you documents. And, and that's been a learning process, so I think it's, it's helped us identify what's going on. That being said, I also, there were questions that came up. In the course of those budget hearings, I provided supplemental information to the council and that is also published online for anybody who's interested with the agenda items, should they be interested. Staff and I are available at this time to answer any questions and thank you all for taking the time to get us to this point.
Thank you. And I'd like, also like to thank your staff for assisting and putting together this excellent budget. Council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
I'd like to-
Yes?
Steve, would it be possible, you mentioned, you said 18 streets, correct?
It's 19 streets.
I'm sorry, 19 streets.
I think it's 19 streets.
Could we get those streets listed on our website?
Yes.
And what's being proposed in the next year? I think that may alleviate some concerns and also provide-
Yes.
An element of transparency as well as notification to the residents that work is coming and prepare yourself, find out what's going on. I think that's, would help all parties concerned.
And all the streets will be, all the homeowners on those streets will be notified prior to work commencement?
Yes, sir. That's one of the things that work isn't going to start, you're going to see, like I said, late July, early, because it'll give us time to, to reach out because there'll be some significant roadwork being done and we don't want someone to walk out front that someday and realize, hey, they're, they're tearing up my road, what's going on. We'll, we'll make sure we, we do that. Akram and I have talked about that. We just signed the agreement la, the 22nd of last month, so I guess we approved the agreement last month and it's been executed just the last week or so with the, the parties involved. So we, we fully intend to do a public outreach and also post all that information, like you say, the mayor pretend suggests, on our website. So we'll, much like we did with the Taft Avenue, we, we actually had a public meeting and, and offered people the opportunity to come in and see what was going to be done and ask questions with both the contractor and ourselves present. So we'll try and replicate something along those lines. The difference here being, this is not one street, this is 19 streets throughout the city. So we may, we haven't decided yet if we'll break that out into certain sections and talk to, you know, talk to one group at one time or whatever. But we're, we're working through that right now because this isn't one strip of, of street, this is various pockets, if you will, throughout the city.
Any other questions or comments?
I have some comments that I'd like to go over. There was a supplement that you did provide to us and is that on the website now? Because it did not get included in, in the agenda.
Yes, it is on, it is online.
Okay. So for the benefit of the public, I want everyone to, if you have a chance, it's just a, a five-page summary. And what it does is it gives you a glossary of some of our terms to make you understand what infrastructure is, what a capital asset is and where our funds are going. It starts off actually with the history of contributions to our general fund reserves and we've gone as far back as 2013 and you'll see that in 2013, we started increasing our general fund reserves at about 128,000 and we went to 300 and 100. And last year, we only added $20,000 and this year, we're proposing $19,000, which is a far cry from the couple of hundred thousand dollars that we're putting in our reserves. So it's something I want to bring your attention to because if we continue to only put $19,000 in there, it's going to be an issue in the future. As far as other expenses that we have, we do have a lot of money going into the streets. It is there. It's been about a three-year process that we've been looking at that. We've just had the streets assessed again. Every two years, we have to have them assessed. So that information is on there because certainly we did have three speakers today that were, that were concerned on it. There is an issue and a dollar amount on the budget that I am concerned about. There's a $40,000 assessment of sidewalks and corners for handicap access. And this was something that was brought up by a couple councilmen that they wanted to have handicap accessibility on all corners of the city. Well, we did have a gentleman come in, I believe lived on Bryn Mawr, Serrano, who, who did express some interest in that. And I've gone, unfortunately, $40,000 is not going to get us anywhere. And we cannot make this city 100% 88. And we cannot make this city 100% ADA-compliant. It's a lot of money. It looks like we're going to have to hire somebody to tell us what we need to do to become ADA-compliant. $40,000 can go a long way in another expense. It can, it can go into redoing our green belt that, um, looks absolutely horrible, or our center medians, to make our, you know, $3 million homes look great when you're driving into the city. That's something, quite frankly, I don't agree with. It's not something we need. We don't need to hire a consultant to tell us where we need to, um, be ADA-compliant in our cities. There's a few other items that I just want to bring everyone's attention to. The storm drain is a lot of money. It's a $950,000 expense. That's huge. We were paying that out of our reserves, we have to. Um, that's a accident, like when your roof collapses, and that's what you have to do. It's a shame that FEMA did not pay for that, but that is taking a big chunk of money out of our budget. There are other items in here, our catch pacing improvement, $200,000, there's a lot of money being spent on infrastructure. Uh, I don't want to go through it, but I want to bring that to the attention of everyone, you know, when you want to sit down with a cup of coffee, go through this. If you have any questions, call the city manager. Um, call one of us, we're versed in it, but be aware that we're spending a lot of the tax dollars that we've collected on the city and on the infrastructure. What we're not spending it on is any beautification. And unfortunately, we have to spend some money on beautification. We don't have to spend a lot. But our trees need to be green, and our green belt and our pathways into the city need to look nice. Because if you want to sell your $2 million home, you got to have the front door look good. And right now, it looks very bad. So I would like to see more money put into that. Our philanthropy groups do not have the money to provide to the city, and that's not what they do anymore. That was a thing of the past. So, um, those are my comments when it does come to the budget. And otherwise, I'd like to thank the staff. It was a big feat to have somebody new come in here after so many years. It's been done very nicely, it's been done, it's easy to read, and I certainly appreciate it. I hope the public does also. Thank you.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions, not comments, but questions of, of staff on this gen item?
Well, I have a couple of questions and comments, if that's okay.
Uh, we have comments after, or, uh, after the public.
Okay. That's fine. I'll wait till then.
Okay. Then, uh, is there anyone here to speak, uh, at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium.
General, raise his hand.
Yeah, general, you raise your hand.
I'm back again. I, I just want to make sure that, that maybe you can answer it, Steve. There's a linkage between the study that identified, I don't know how many streets we have, but identified the, the priority. And so we're working on, with little money we have, and I understand, gives and takes on that. But we're working off the top, and we're going to work down the ones that are identified as the ones most needy. And we're working down that. That, I don't see that in, I, it's not that I would see it, but maybe somebody knows that, that yes, we have a master plan, which was done, and then I'm trying to make sure that we're working down that as money becomes available, and it's in the budget, year in and year out.
And I would say that we're working, I would look at, we're working from the bottom up, if you were those that have the lowest scores, or in the worst condition, need to be repaired first.
Yeah.
The only, the only exception I would make is, if we know streets are around there that need, are going to need repair, we may deal with a couple streets in the surrounding area right there at the same time.
See, no, I'm going to argue against that.
Huh?
You know, now, that's
Well, we would
That's appeasement.
Well, if we know streets are low-rated, and are going to be in the, the area, so we'll deal with two streets. If we have something in the 50s and something in the 70s, we'll also deal with in the 70s at the same time, as opposed to re-stage an area and have to come back and deal with that two years later, or something there. So the work can be done in a, in a area at the same time. So I
Okay. I don't want to debate, I mean, it's, it's semantics or something. I'm just, I'm just concerned that when we take on a street, we take on the whole street that was rated whatever, the low thing, and we do it.
Yes.
And the next, and we should be doing the next street down. And I
We are using
I worry about somebody that basically says, well, my street's right next door, aren't you going to do mine too? You know?
I got your point.
Yeah, okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, general, you say you live on Adams Ranch Road?
Yeah.
And, uh, is that road on the list?
That is not on this list at this time.
Oh, I'm in the top though. Is there one?
Not, it's, it's not on the list of the 19 that was approved by the council at this time.
That is correct.
We should make a clarification that the council
Are those the streets that you approved?
Let's make a, the council did not pick the streets. The, the streets that were picked came from, started three years ago, from the engineering company. So we were brought a list of streets with their particular PCIs, and which ones they were going to work on. We did not pick the streets, we didn't give them any sort of, um, of a go-to, and there wasn't anybody who came in and said, hey, I want my street too, because I'm doing Adams Ranch, you know, they're, they're doing Francisco, um, which is right across from you, is what they're doing. They're almost to you, but not quite. Yeah. But just so you know, we didn't pick it, nor did anyone come in and take it. So it did come from the professionals. And just to make sure everyone understands, because it takes so much, and you know this, because it takes so much money to stage all of your equipment, you can't ignore the street that, you know, is adjoining, you know, to Montana or to Francisco. It just takes quite a bit of money. But just so you know, we did not pick them, they came in from the, from the engineers. Uh, we trust them, they're the ones doing the work, and it's a lot of money.
Okay. And I'm not arguing the point of adjacent streets or something, that's more of a little jab at that, you know? I'm arguing the point that I really believe that the council should have had a review to make sure that, that the worst streets, among the 50, the worst streets are being addressed.
They are. And if you're, and you know what, before you
Oh, you're going to pub-, somebody's going to publish it, or somebody
You know what, it was in the agenda last month that we approved, but we'll get a copy to you, how's that?
Oh, that's, I'm fine.
Well, it's, it's good reading.
Sure, it is. Yeah. Goes right along with mysteries.
And I think it's, I think it's worth noting, too, that 72% of the streets in Villa Park are a good or very good condition. So they're above the 50%, which is really, really good. So it's a testament to our city staff and people like that, who have been taking care of things over time, for us to have that higher percentage, compared to some other cities who are much lower in the good and very good range. Now, we've got some we need to address, which the engineers are in fact telling us to go do, and that's what we're, that the list was all about and so forth. And we are, just because, we're not stopping it after this year, so we're investing this year, and next year, and the following year, and so forth. There's monies in the budget to continue that process. We just can't do it all at one time. Love to, but we can't.
I, I tried to ask when I was talking about the five-year plan, that, that you're doing that, but
Right.
Yeah, we have 500,000.
I think that's great, you know, the council deals with today's problem, but more importantly, I think in terms of the long-term problem, road to long-term, infrastructure.
Right. Absolutely.
I'm just trying to make sure that, that to some degree, a prejudice, because of my road was a bad road, that I, was I going to get fixed or not? The answer is, not sure this year. Pending.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Uh, council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
Um, yeah, I had a couple items. Um, you know, and Steve, I apologize, I was a little bit technology challenged today, because my laptop died and a couple other things, so I apologize. I asked Steve, uh, last week to, to give me a five-year view, and I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, of the funding that we used in our budgets over the last five years has shifted considerably, um, from, from day-to-day things to maintenance, to, to also to large capital projects. Um, I, I've seen a significant increase in maintenance services, and a significant increase in, in capital projects that are outside of things like beautification, that council person talked about earlier. I, too, am concerned about the entrances to our city and what they look like. I, uh, I actually spent, uh, quite a few hours with my wife in the car this weekend, driving most of the city entrances and looking at them and examining them. I have a video, but I don't know if I'm technically challenged or not, we can see it.
We can open it.
Okay. So I think it's worth us just, you know, taking a couple minutes to look at, these are our entrances to our city, and what they look like today, and they do really need to be addressed, because we're all worried about our property values and things like that. And when people drive down Wanda, or Cannon, or whatever, these are the things that they see. And I hope each and every one of you will take time to go walk the green belt, and walk the other entrances to the city, and see this, and see that we need to invest more than $65,000, or 1% of our budget, on beautification of Villa Park, considering that all the strategic planning we did, number four of our strategic plan says, enhance the attractiveness of our community. That's not attractive to me. And that's what people see when they ride into our city. That's their first impression. Look at the fences, look at the grass, everything is dead. I think our city staff does an amazing job trying to take care of what's there, but that's what people see. I'm not proud of that, to be honest with you, and I don't think any of us should be. I'm surprised the realtors aren't saying things about property values and things of that nature, so. And by the way, if you look at that little, uh, structure right there, that little brick structure, my wife and I noticed that there was a pile of trash there. So evidently, there had been a homeless person there, prior to me pulling up, and left all their trash there. I think, I went back a little while later, and I think Mike may have gone by and picked it up, because it was cleaned up. So I appreciate that. But that's, that's right there, Wanda and, and Villa Park Road.
There's, is there another one, or is there?
Yes, there's two more. I also went over to, uh, this is coming down Taft. This is, this is our brand-new street that we just built. And if you look off to the right, the new curb and gutter that's there, and on the opposite side of that, around the trees, it's just dirt. This is another main thoroughfare that people are driving, who are looking at our city, driving up and down the street, they see this. On the right-hand side, look at the, look at the, there's nothing there. It's just dirt. No flowers, no water, water plants, no anything. You know? And this is all the way down Taft. I mean, we have some really nice stuff up towards the, uh, towards Cannon, but this, this entire stretch here of new road that we put in, didn't include any budget money for flowers or anything. Now, the belief is that, you know, Women's League or other people can contribute, or whatever, private contributions, but that's been that way for quite a while. So, and this is the entrance off of Cannon. If you look right here at this wall, look at the dirt right there, I probably did do a very good job of photographing that, but that's coming in off of Cannon, into, into Villa Park on, on Taft. And you can see, it's just dirt. There are no trees, no bushes, no anything. And that's, again, what people see. So, you know, we're, and that, that's enough. We're, we're putting in, there's a couple more, if, if, I'll make available to anyone who wants to see it. But we're putting $50,000 in there for the green belt improvement. It's going to cost way more than that, you saw what that looked like, to fix that. And also, um, the, the drought-resistant landscape for $15,000, so a total of $65,000, 1% of our budget, goes to beautification, and it's the number four priority in our strategic goals and plans. So I have heartburn with this, when the majority of the monies that we're spending are all up in infrastructure, and nothing on our city outside of infrastructure. I, too, have a problem with the American Disabilities Act, uh, issue and the $40,000. I, it seems like to me, every time we turn around, we're spending 10, and 15, $20,000 on consultants, and for what reason? Our city staff not know where we need, uh, ADA-compliant sidewalks, and we can't figure that out, and you, I don't mind having some money budgeted for that, because I don't want to deny anyone access. But we, we're constantly hiring consultants, and spending frivolous money to go do that. I want to know why I need a count consultant to tell me where I need ADA-compliant sidewalks. I can see for myself, I rode around the city, I see at least a handful, I counted at least five places where we need to do something. And I believe we need to have the money to do so, because it is a sidewalk. And if you think back about the history of the sidewalks, the majority of the sidewalks were put in for the children, to walk to school. That's when they were put in. And the majority of them today have ADA-compliant ramps on them. Some don't, I noticed that, and we need to go fix that. But frivolous things like consultants, and not giving us any money for beautifications is my heartburn. And I apologize, because I missed the last budget meeting. I, I'm sorry, I would have brought a lot of this up then. But this is just, to me, I, I would like to see more money shifted to our number four priority, and, and a little bit more balance between that and infrastructure.
Any other comments?
Can I make a, a comment? Thank you very much for that, that was very enlightening. And I just want to make one comment, that if anybody who lives in Villa Park had that fence that you had in that video, I guarantee you, they would be brought to council. Somebody would be complaining, and there would be, there would be a code enforcement. And that's our city.
Actually, some of those are code enforcement problems.
I was just going to say, those are code enforcement issues, unless I'm mistaken.
Okay.
Does the city own that property? Does the city own that property? The city owns that fence line there? Those are not private residence fences?
Wanda Green Belt is, uh, within the public right-of-way, it's owned by the city.
The fence, the fence line itself, the fences.
I'm not really sure about the fence, uh, on that.
Because we've been told by city staff, in numerous meetings, that it's a code enforcement issue, that they're private residences and private homeowners, and there's been some of the reluctance. I'd like to get some clarification.
But the problem, Vince, is not just the fences, it's the whole thing.
No, no, I agree, I agree. I, I, Robbie, I, I agree with your point, hear me out here, but I want to make sure we get to the crux of this.
We're not putting any money in the budget.
I, I want to make sure we get to the crux of this, I want to make sure we get to the real truth of this matter, which is, part of the issue is a private property owner Exactly. Or property owners not taking care of their fences, and some of it is just a lack of availability of funds. Also, there is not, hang on.
Okay.
There's also not a plan in place. There is not a plan in place to say, hey, we're going to do this on the Wanda Green Belt. Throwing money at a problem without a plan is like throwing money down the drain. Have a plan. Get, have an ad hoc committee of master gardeners, of landscape contractors, free of charge. Have a committee away from the city council, people that know what they're doing, and have them come up with a plan.
Our city staff knows how to do that. And besides, I agree with you about the fences, and, and the private homeowners need to take charge of that and, and do something about that. Majority of the renovations, and we've been talking about this since I got on council, I mean, this, that, nothing's happened, and it's getting worse. Um, and, and I'm just saying, if, if people here are concerned about property values, and attractiveness of this city, and things like that, I'm surprised that more people aren't saying things to us about it, to be perfectly honest with you. And we're only dedicating a small amount of, of dollars to this. Yeah, you're right, there needs to be a plan. But the gentleman over there is perfectly capable of putting together a plan and implementing it and coming up with a budget for it, but we keep taking money away from him to go to, to be able to go and implement that kind of stuff.
Unfortunately, Mother Nature took a lot of money away from us, but I, I agree with you. Money does need to be spent. We do need to have a plan moving forward. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I've got some comments I'd like to make. Um, and, uh, Mr. City Attorney, could you refresh everyone's recollection of what the Americans with Disabilities Act is and what legis, what, uh, legal actions have taken place and what cities have faced as it pertains to that and what our responsibilities are?
So, the American with Disabilities Act was enacted into law during the first Bush administration in 1991. It basically is a federal requirement, even though there is a state corollary that requires that public facilities be able to be accommodated with people with disabilities. So, um, City Hall has to have certain access requirements, and sidewalks are considered, uh, public facilities, much like parks would be, anything of that nature, which requires you to have access for the disabled. So, that means certain things, and it doesn't mean certain things. The ADA only requires sidewalks that were constructed after its adoption to meet its requirements. So, like I said, the ADA was adopted in 1991. So if there's any new sidewalks put in after that point in time, they would have to meet those requirements. Sidewalks before that date would not have to. Now, there's issues as to when a street is majorly renovated, when the ADA kicks in and stuff of that nature. It also does not require you to put sidewalks where there aren't sidewalks, right? So you only have to improve facilities when a facility exists, right? So there are a lot of, uh, technical ways to comply with that, and there are certain, um... It often gets quite comical, the level of minutia required, like what does the color have to be of those little bumps you put on the ramp? They're called truncated domes. They're there for the visually impaired, which is also another type of disability. And there's been lawsuits over, can those be gray or do they have to be yellow? So we're into the bureaucratic state and a lot of stuff there. But that, in essence, is what the ADA is supposed to do. And the city has a legal obligation, within the parameters I've just outlined, to try to comply with that over time. Cities put together documents called transition plans to sort of plan out how they're eventually gonna do that. And that's the, the framework that the city works under.
A couple of questions, perhaps, of the, the city manager. There's been mention of a consultant. Did that come from city staff or a city council member? Because I'm one of the biggest proponents of curb cuts and handicap access, um, around the city. And it's not for political benefit, it's using common sense. I have, um, suggested that they be placed around the major, the major walking areas, the schools. With the one exception being Villa Park High School because it's due to undergo major reconstruction within the, uh, the upcoming years. And likely, a lot of that will be dealt with. Did the consultant come from myself or anybody supporting this? Or where did that suggestion come from?
Consultant is, is my recommendation. Akram is a consultant.
Right.
Uh, Akram's time to go out and assess and come up with specifications, et cetera, is gonna cost us some money to go out because he's basically handling everything else. So while you may call him a consultant, I'm not talking about going out to an RFP. But if I ask Akram to do this, that's gonna be extra project work that I'm gonna ask him to do beyond what he's already doing. So I need to budget some money for that purpose. So when I call consultant, Akram is a consultant. I'm not talking about hiring a firm to do it, but somebody has to go out and survey, identify, prioritize, and say specifically, are they gray or are they yellow dimples? I mean, somebody's gotta do that. I mean, I know it's painstaking, I know it's ridiculous, but somebody has to do it, and that's not gonna be done at no cost. So I put aside $10,000. I set aside then additional $30,000 to allow us, according to Akram, it probably in the range, if you're gonna pick curb cuts and do all the things, you're probably spending between $5,000 or $10,000 per corner. All right? So if I put that, another $30,000, that allows us to target certain ones and get some done that are high priority. All right? In a realistic approach in getting them done this fiscal year. I could budget $100,000, but we're not gonna get $100,000 done worth. So what I'm trying to do is what we can realistically assess and do. So that's my recommendation for consultant, and it is not the firm going out and doing an RFP to find somebody. It's basically to use the staff resources, but they come at an expense to identify and tell me the specifications, tell me what has to be done, tell me how to do it, and tell me all those specifics that I can't answer because I am not an expert and nor is, is Mike or anybody on the specifications of the ADA Act, like suggested by, uh, the city attorney. There's, there is some finesse to it and some requirements that somebody has to do it. The last thing I want to do is improve something and do it wrong and turn around and say, well, we got sued. You did something, you didn't do it right, and now we're in bigger trouble.
Absolutely.
So that's what I'm talking about, okay? So there's some clarity to the $10,000. It was my suggestion, and that was basically to protect us and to allow us some time to do it the right way and actually understanding it's gonna take us some time to figure out what is the right way.
Thank you.
So Akram has a full load to carries with him right now, and to have him do anything further, I, I, I have to figure there's gonna be an expense to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that wasn't clear to me either. I thought that, uh, we were discussing a, a special consultant as some sort of, apparently it's just addition staff.
I think you'll find, just to follow up, coming, I think you'll find that we don't have a lot to do. Like I said, I drove around the schools. I looked at where we have sidewalks and looked and counted. It's probably less than, less than 10. Maybe, maybe five or six if we're, if, if that's... And, and most of them are right down there near the end, at, at, on the end of, uh, at Saravilla.
So my, my only, that is not a target? That's a maximum that we would be allowed to spend. So in other words, I have money designated for that purpose. If I spend $10,000 and then get all those intersections done that we want to, we've got a $30,000 savings, which I'm not gonna turn away. We're not gonna spend it on, on enhancing that corner. We're gonna do something else.
I have a comment. We're talking about the streets, but our own council chamber here, with an election coming up, this is not handicap accessible either. So, I mean, we, we want people to run for council. Quite frankly, we gotta start here. You can't have anybody in a wheelchair come up here. So, you know, I think that we gotta start here and not at a school, when the schools are quite fine. I mean, I put my, I've put all my kids through the schools with strollers. I don't see any, I don't see any corner there that there's an issue. I see, um, ramps where there are no sidewalks, because we don't have sidewalks. It's kind of silly sometimes. You come, go down Serrano and you go down Bryn Mawr, there isn't a sidewalk, but there's a ramp, and then there's a tree. I mean, we don't have sidewalks. So unless we're gonna continue on to build the stripes, sidewalks, um, you know, these are issues that normally come up as we see them.
Well, we've also spent money on ramps to nowhere, too.
Yeah.
If you go down here to Taft, there's a ramp to nowhere, and it's painted yellow. So I mean, I, it, there is a balance-
Yeah.
-to make sure that we do the right things. And I, for one, am the last person in the world to deny anyone access. I don't, I'm not a proponent for that. I'm just saying, we're spending money on, on things that, you know, we're prioritizing things differently than I would, I would prioritize. That's all.
Any other comments?
Nothing further.
Okay. Is there a motion on this matter, on the budget?
I'd like to move it.
I had, I just one question. Councilman Pitts, you've talked about beautification. How much would you put in there? It says $50,000 for, uh, the Green Belt. How much would you want?
Well, my idea would be to put something there that's, that, that not only we can look at, but we can also use at the same time. I don't have an estimate right now, but I would, I would go out and get an estimate on some of the ideas that I have and, and come back to council with, with the appropriate funding levels to, to meet that.
Well, we have to pass a budget tonight. We don't have that. We could look at that as an item in the future to make an adjustment to the budget for it.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll move, uh, the approval of the, uh, salary and benefits resolution.
Okay.
That's, that's the least one.
Second?
Second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the, uh, sal, uh, benefits and salary resolution?
That would be for clarification. That's the recommendation, um-
That's the first one, isn't it?
Number one.
Okay.
Resolution number one.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-3432.
32.
Okay. All those in favor, or, uh, please vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Okay, we'll now hear, uh, resolution, the second item, Resolution 2018-3431. Do you have a motion?
I'll move approval of the second resolution, uh-
Second.
Budget appropriation of revenue and establishing appropriation limit.
Okay. Are there any, uh, any discussion? Hearing done. Uh, please vote.
There you go.
Go ahead. Are we voting?
Yes. Passes by a 4-1 vote with Councilwoman Fassinally voting no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next hearing is the municipal code amendments to prohibit short-term rentals in all zoning districts within the city. Uh, staff, please give, give the staff report.
Agenda item number four is a public hearing to discuss a proposed short-term rental ban that was, uh, requested to be agendized by the Mayor Protem and Councilman Pitts. Uh, Ray, uh, our city planner, is here to answer questions specifically about it, and he can probably walk you through it, but I would defer to the, to councilmen if they want to lead off with comments or you want him to make a presentation. It's agendized at your preference, so.
I would defer to staff on this, and then I'll follow up with comments.
I'll be brief. Mayor, members of the city council, before you this evening, for your consideration is a proposed municipal code amendments intended to prohibit short-term rentals in all zoning districts within the city. Briefly, short-term rentals or STRs are generally defined as residential property rentals used for a period of less than 30 consecutive days in length. While STRs have grown in popularity throughout Orange County, um, California, and worldwide, they've been identified as a community concern due to its potential for increased traffic, noise, high occupant, uh, turnover, property maintenance and density in single-family residential districts. Also, the occupants within NSCR has the, uh, potential to exceed the design capacity for the structure and property that could result in health and safety problems, which in turn may negatively impact neighbors and, uh, adjacent properties. So in response, um, city staff conducted research on how other cities are addressing or have addressed, uh, STRs in their city. Based on city staff research findings, the proposed amendment was drafted and includes, uh, definitions for STRs, advertisement as well as specific language prohibiting STRs and STR-related, uh, advertisements. This draft, uh, amendments were, were presented to the Community Development Committee, uh, the CDC, uh, meeting on June 18th. And after a brief discussion with the committee members and staff, um, the committee members voted to forward this item to, uh, city council for consideration. Public hearing notices were posted 10 days prior to this meeting, and to date, uh, city staff did meet with one property owner who understands the, the concerns about STRs but do not support prohibiting them, but rather having provisions in place to, uh, closely regulate and monitor, um, the activities of these types of rental units in the city. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Well, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Uh, I had a question. I want to ask staff. If you know how many short-term rentals are in the cities, what kind of complaints we had over what time period? Like, for example, last year?
As far as the number, I, um, I would identify that I'm only aware of probably three that we could see on, online, uh, of, of short-term rentals in the city. As far as complaints, I have not received any directly. I've received some secondhand, uh, from some of the council members. The Mayor Protem identified one that he brought to my attention, um, although I don't, I'm not sure exactly the end result of that. I think there was some confusion about which, which was the source of that. But, um, I have not received specific. We have received a lot of inquiries and some people concerned about it, saying they either liked it or didn't like it, but we haven't tabulated anything specifically. So there are only three that I'm aware of. There're prob, there may be more. They're not required to report, and they're not required to get a business license to operate in the city. So if they're operating in a very positive manner with, as a good neighbor, we wouldn't hear about it.
Also, uh, staff talked about a lot of negative issues like, uh, increased traffic, over, overbearing in the houses. Have we had any of those problems that's listed there?
We have parking discussions consistently. That's always an issue about neighbors are parking on lawns or things like that. I, I can't attribute those to one specific, but we do get people concerned. Anytime people are parking on the street, there's always the calls about people parking on the street or people parking, you know, five cars in the driveway, et cetera. I'm not, I, I, I can't specifically say that's, that's an issue that's been raised by other cities that we hear. Like I said, the number of actual specific complaints has been limited, uh, but, you know, again, it's not to be dismissed because I know that we do get complaints. I just don't know that, you know, if there are cars parked, what the reasons they're parked there for.
Okay.
I have some comments to make, yes. I did some significant research on this. Uh, I found three short-term rentals, and that was by searching for them. Specifically, I found, uh, one that's on patrician, which is why this item was brought up by Councilman Omer Protem Rosini. It was brought up for this item because, uh, I know that you had received, um, some sort of a complaint from maybe one of the neighbors. I went out to that neighborhood. I spoke to the neighbors next to the house, specifically, who have a family. I asked them, uh, if they had any issues, if they heard any noises. They said no. If they did, they would be complaining. They didn't like it, but they had nothing to complain about. Then I did receive a text from one of the neighbors that, again, lives on patrician. Uh, it was about 10 o'clock at night. I forwarded it on to the city manager, saying, what am I supposed to do? I have an Airbnb on my street, and it's 10 o'clock at night, and they're playing the music, and my kids can't sleep. Well, that was, uh, not that home. That was a home actually on Sycamore. The police went out. Somebody was having a wedding. It was not that home. So there have not been any documented complaints at all. The other home that we found here, I know the, the homeowner is here. That is our storm drain, um, home. I call it because I know, know of a way to do it. She's operated, uh, an Airbnb for years. We didn't know about that. We found out about it in January. We've had no problem. There's not been one complaint. And in fact, I have read on these three, the only complaint out of three online from people who have rented them has been the one on patrician that says there's too many rules. Because they're not allowed to roam the streets after 10 o'clock at night. They're not allowed to have parties. They're not allowed to have loud music. And that was the only complaint online from people who paid these, um, outrageous prices, quite frankly, for, for one of them. I've met with that particular owner. I think that all of us have, uh, met with them. If there had been complaints, I would say, let's address them. But last month, we took away rental rights from people who have a granny flat. Now we're taking away, um, rental rights from people who have been operating in the city legitimately for years with absolutely no complaint. What's next? We just keep taking our property rights away from our homeowners. I mean, we can't expect people to want to live here if every two months, there's an ordinance coming up because you want to turn it into some sort of a city that has restrictions such as the homeowners association. And if we had issues here, by all means, let's address them. My response to the, um, person who said, what am I supposed to do with that Airbnb making noise? Was call the sheriff. We have an ordinance in place for noise, and sign a complaint. That was my advice. I forwarded it to city manager. Well, there was no complaint because it was not their house. So there was no issue. So let's not make laws and ordinances when we don't have one. And certainly, let's not restrict any more rights from our, uh, property. The reason we moved to Villa Park is because we don't have homeowners association, because we are allowed to have our house painted green. We are allowed to have, um, cars parked on the street, and we don't have restrictions. But we do have laws in place if there is an issue with noise or loitering. We don't need to make anything up in this case with the three documented homes that we had to search for. We had to search for these people. We did not have complaints at all. There's no reason for a new ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. We're actually dealing with any questions of the staff report. Are there any questions of the staff on this item?
Well, my question to the staff is, once again, I've asked it last month, and I asked it the month before. Are there any complaints on an Airbnb in our city?
I, I think we answered that with respect to council.
Okay. Well, that, I want to, once again, so now we've been, that's been answered four times. Zero complaints.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium.
Hi. My name is Sam Olson. I have lived in Villa Park since 1991. Moved here with my family. I love the city. It's one of the best cities I've ever seen to work in. We talked about making the city more beautiful. I've tried to do that since 1991. Done over, I've beautified over 20 homes in the city, made them spectacular. I don't know of any other way to make the city beautiful than to do that one house at a time. Spent over $10 million on beautifying the city. I have one vacation rental, the one that the, uh, Diana talked about. It's run very well, very professionally. As far as I know, there's never been an incident. It backs up to my own property. The only noise I've heard are kids swimming in the pool. They're not any more noisy than the ki, my own kids swimming in the pool. We don't allow any of that kind of stuff to happen. It's a beautiful home, and I, I would never allow anyone in there that would be, uh, causing problems, having parties or anything like that. And, um, I'd just like the council to consider that, since it's not really a big issue in the city, to address it when it, if it ever does become an issue. I just started to work on two new homes in Villa Park. Beautiful homes. My intention is to make them beautiful. All the homes I've done, I've sold them to wonderful families that have come into the city. And I'm gonna finish those two cities, those two homes, because I've already bought them. And I, uh, would like to continue beautifying the city, but if, um, if I feel like they're taking away property rights and it becomes a city that's, becomes too restrictive, I'm not gonna be motivated to continue to spend money in this city. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, comments from the members of the public? Okay. Is there, uh, council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
I'd like to, uh, lead off. I'd like to thank Mr. Olson for contacting us individually. I had a nice conversation with him. I've told him I appreciate his efforts within the community. I candidly disagree with the use of this home. I think it's a commercial business being run in a residential neighborhood, and that's not what Villa Park's about. But I do want to thank him for his soft-spoken approach, and I also want- And I also want to thank my fellow council members for their points of view as it relates to property rights. But it's that very argument right there that I want to address. What about the property rights of the neighbors? Because with all due respect, Councilwoman Fasenelli, there's a different version of the truth that other folks have stated. And I don't think you're giving everybody in Villa Park credit for what they heard and what they experienced, and I think that's unfortunate. I had complaints from folks on Patrician and folks frankly up in my neck of the woods. And I think it's disingenuous to say that we've had no complaints, because we have. It's documented.
Where?
I've sent those to, excuse me, I sent those to Steve Franks. And this is a growing problem within Orange County. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, there are cities growing basically each day that are looking at this and either heavily regulating or prohibiting them outright. And can you name some of those cities?
Yes, I can. I know Brea has discussed it. Huntington Beach is addressing it. Yorba Linda is actually calling and seeing what we're doing because they're looking at it. And Costa Mesa is curious about how it goes because they've indicated they'd like to address it as well. I know that Anaheim has addressed it, and they're probably, and Lake Forest has imposed some regulations on that. I think those are the cities that come to mind.
Steve, if I might add to that, there was a, there was a survey done March of 2016, and as of that year, there were 24 of the 34 cities in the county that either ban or prohibits short-term rentals.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I'm not going to rehash what the staff has spent a tremendous amount of time discussing. I just wanted to clarify what was said and point in my humble opinion and those of many of our residents, the truth of the matter. A gentleman may be running a nice business, and he may be a thoughtful, well-spoken gentleman, and I appreciate his efforts, and I welcome his presence within the community and his continued investment. But the problem is, there have been complaints, and this issue is only going to grow. We are in close proximity to a number of different facilities that would attract that type of clientele. These residences are advertised to sleep 22 people. Really? 22 people? You can't tell me that that's not going to pose a strain on resources, both the resources in the house, as well as city and parking, and frankly, the patients of our neighbors, and will, in my opinion, diminish their own property values. I defer to my colleague now.
My issue, or my reason for bringing this forward, is not necessarily about complaints that we've received from the supposed three residents that we have in Villa Park, some of which are doing a really good job and maybe curtailing the complaints. Mine comes from a much larger potential impact to our community. If you go out there and do a lot of research on the internet, as I've done, not to say it's all true, some of it's fake news, but if you do some of the research, there, the first and foremost thing I was concerned about was safety. And these rental homes across the country, and most recently in the state of California, there have been several short-term rentals where there were large groups of people, where guns were drawn, knives were drawn, people were shot, killed, and maimed. I cannot imagine having a little child in Villa Park, or one of our constituents, hit by a flying bullet, or some riot that goes on as a result of somebody being irresponsible in one of these houses. Now, I realize we've got, you know, people taking good care of that, but as we all know in sober living homes, we know that there are good operators and there are bad operators. We know about the good operators. What we don't know is about the bad ones. The other impact it has is affordable housing and rental properties within the city that could potentially have an impact as a result of the growth of short-term rentals in our city, because it takes away from housing that is potentially, can be used for other people to rent long-term. And also, did I say something funny, Councilman? Did I say something funny? You chuckled.
Yes, you did.
Okay. I appreciate that. So there's other impacts. You know, we've got federal, I mean, state law that's requiring us to do things with affordable housing, and short-term rentals have a potential for taking away from that as well. So those are the reasons that I looked into these things and took it upon myself to research and understand. It's not about the three here today or the few complaints that we've received. It's the long-term agenda for this city and making sure that we're safe and that we have opportunities for people outside of just people who don't care about this community coming in renting a property for one day, two days, three days, four days, or whatever. That's my reasoning for doing it. And I'm glad I could entertain you.
Yes. What was funny, Councilman Pitts, was that you were equating talking about the short-term rentals, take away from affordable housing in Villa Park. When has there been affordable housing in Villa Park?
Think about some of the steps we're taking. Thinking about some of the steps that we're taking right now to, because of what's the requirements we have for affordable housing in Villa Park. What are we doing with granny flats and things like that? Now, if they are all short-term rentals, where does our affordable housing come from?
Okay. I disagree. Well, first of all, I think we ought to be here about solving problems. What you guys have is, to me, is a solution looking for a problem. There's no problem here. We've got three short-term houses in a housing stock of 2,000 houses. No verifiable complaints. The city manager hasn't seen any. You've seen some, but I don't know why they just come to you with the complaints, and all five of us here, no one else, has complained about these. And first of all, you know, I really don't believe in taking people's private property rights. And I see you going down this road. You did this with accessory dwelling units. You're doing this now with the entire city, and it's, I think it's absolutely wrong.
Any other comments?
I have one more comment. Talking about affordable housing, yes, and you did mention that bill. I mean, last month, we made it, the council, the majority, made it illegal to have a home and an accessory dwelling unit, and to rent both of them.
Yeah.
Okay. They made it, it was mandatory that you have to live there. So we took away.
No, you didn't.
We took.
You can live in the front house and rent the short-term.
We took it away, and we didn't notify anyone. And we didn't notify anyone even for this. We didn't notify people who have Airbnbs. We never notified, they didn't come to the CDC. I mean, all we did was stick it on the agenda. I mean, we, the gentleman who, on Patrician, he found out from someone giving him a copy of the newspaper. I mean, we're not notifying even our residents of changing basic property rights, and we've done a lot in the last 30 days. So I hope that the council reconsideres, the majority here reconsideres what they brought forward because there have not been any verified complaints. We had to search these people out, and I understand that other cities have a big problem. But we're not them. Let's take our problems when they come to us. Thank you.
Okay. Just to conclude this, the comments on this, I'd like to make a few myself. Past four years since I started to, decided to run for city council, I've talked to a lot of residents in the city. I knocked on every door in the city to try to talk to everybody. And the consistent feedback I've received from every resident I've spoken to is that they like Villa Park just like it is and want to keep it just like it is. Now, we have some pressures from the state, you know, and from the federal government regarding, you know, sober living homes and affordable housing that we have to do, we have to comply with. But in terms of trying to keep our city the way it is, I think that's, you know, we should be listening to our residents. They want to keep Villa Park just like it is. In 1962, when our city was incorporated, our founders zoned the entire city as low-density residential. In fact, they even zoned this area where we're sitting right now, where the Ralphs is located. This whole shopping center was zoned initially as E4, low-density residential. And it was only with reluctance did the community later agree to rezon for this commercial center. And so strong was the, was the residents' desire to maintain a quiet residential zoning that many residents boycotted the original Market Basket grocery store, such that it failed, and only, you know, later did Ralphs come in and take it over. But our residents have been very strongly supportive of quiet, low-density residential. And I see that as keeping Villa Park just like it is. So clearly, in my view, our city has had a longstanding, single-family residential land use tradition. The very clear, and again, the very clear direction that I've received from the residents is that they want us, they want us as a council, us as a city, to keep Villa Park just like it is. Opening up the city to commercial use, you know, be it short-term rentals or whatever, I don't think is consistent with that objective and that desire. I don't believe that, you know, one of my concerns also is that, you know, we really don't have a good way to control if this situation or short-term rentals should problems develop. We have very limited code enforcement staff. As Councilman Pitts pointed out, you know, we've got some, or Rosini, that we've got some code enforcement issues, maybe with offenses along Wanda. We've, I've heard of, I know we have other code enforcement issues around the city. Our staff really is only sufficient to respond to complaints, not, we don't have staff to go out and patrol the city and make sure that codes are complied with on an affirmative basis. It's just on an exception. Another concern I have with short-term rentals is that if somebody moves into Villa Park and they are child molester, whatever, they are, must register under Megan's Law. We know where they are. We don't have any control of anybody who comes into a short-term rental. They're here, and then they're gone. Anyway, I support the resolution that was proposed by my fellow councilman. I think it's, although I'm very supportive of private property rights, I think there are other places in Orange County where people, if they wish to invest in short-term rentals, there are other places that are more receptive to it. Also, I'd like to share my, a personal experience I have. As many of you know, I have a little beach cottage down in San Clemente, and the city of San Clemente allowed short-term rentals. And there are a number of short-term rentals in my neighborhood. And, you know, in addition, we have owner-occupied houses in there. And let me tell you, they all oppose the short-term rentals. They oppose the traffic. They oppose the, just the fact that you've got transients coming in and out of your neighborhood all the time. You don't know who's next door. They see it as a diminution of their property values. So yeah, I think, you know, it's been pointed out that some may feel that it's a diminution of their property values because they can't do a short-term rental, but to the other adjacent property owners, it's diminution of their property values by having short-term rentals popping up next door. I'm not sure that I'd be comfortable with a short-term rental next door to me. So anyway, I'd like to be responsive to the clear message that I've received from the residents that we should keep, try to keep Villa Park just like it is and not seek to change it for other purposes, so.
Mayor Colacca.
Yes.
I agree with you that people want to keep Villa Park just as it is. But what you're doing here is not keeping it just as it is. You're changing it. If we continue to take away people's property rights in Villa Park, people won't want to come here anymore. Why would you want to come to a community that they take away all your property rights as soon as you step in the door? So it's not, we should keep it the way it is by not coming up with all these onerous new regulations on people's property.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move this.
Yeah, there wasn't a question.
And this is first, this first reading, too, isn't it, Steve?
Yes, sir. This is the first reading. The second reading would be July 24th.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Please vote.
That passes with a 3-2 vote with Councilwoman Fasenelli and Councilman Nelson voting no.
Our last hearing is the consideration of variance 2018-01 at 19242 Mesa Drive. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay. This is a variance that is at 19242 Mesa Drive. There's actually two variances here, as pointed out by Councilman Pitts. There's a height and a setback requirement, right? So Ray Pasquale will be here. This was heard by the CDC, the Community Development Committee, at their last meeting earlier this month, at the eight, was it the 18th, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah. So Ray, why don't you go ahead and walk us through it?
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, this variance application involves a piece of property that is less than an acre in size, located at 19242 Mesa Drive in the E4 zoning district. The request is to allow a taller fence to be within the first 20 feet of the front yard setback area for this property pursuant to the zoning ordinance. The maximum height is three and a half feet, again, within the first 20 feet of the front yard setback area as measured from the front property line. In this case, the front property line for this, for this site is adjacent to Mesa Drive. Based on the submittal plans, which I put copies of and on the dais for members of the council, the property owners requesting approval to install a five-foot-tall split-face pilaster columns, rider and fencing along a portion of the front property line, again, adjacent to Mesa Drive, as well as a segment that returns to the house and along the side property line adjacent to Loma Street. City staff's recommending approval of this variance request because it has been determined that there are physical conditions inherent with this property that sets it apart from other properties within the vicinity and in the same zoning district. In addition to the property having an atypical configuration and topography, it is located at the corner of Mesa Drive and Loma Street, which are well-traveled roadways. In particular, Loma Street is one of the three entrances to the city from Cannon Street. Additionally, the property is immediately, immediately abuts a designated pedestrian and equestrian trail. The additional one-and-a-half-foot deviation in height would afford the property owner more security, privacy, and protection, again, being at the corner of, at an intersection. Furthermore, the proposed height of the fence is the minimum requirement necessary to secure an existing swimming pool in the rear yard area. Approval of this variance request will not constitute the granting of a special privilege that will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. This item went before the CDC on June 18th. In advance of this meeting, city staff did mail out courtesy notices to property owners that were in immediate vicinity. There were no other, the present at the meeting was the mayor, CDC chairman, city staff, and also the applicant, and also the architect for this project. And he presented a colored illustration of the conceptual landscape plan, which shows how a combination of ground cover and low-lying shrubs would de-emphasize the vertical dimension of the fence that will go along Mesa Drive and Loma Street, and also adding interest to the streetscape of those two streets. Following a brief discussion between the committee members and city staff, committee members voted to forward this item up to city council for consideration. As required by code, this, this item was noticed 10 days prior to this meeting, and to date, staff has not received any comments for or against this item. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
I do. Go ahead, please.
Okay. So the variance is for the poles in between the fence, correct, that are higher? Not that the fence isn't higher, it's the poles.
It's the pilaster columns as well as the rider and fencing, because they both exceed the three-and-a-half-foot-tall maximum allowable height within the first 20 feet of the front. the three and a half foot tall maximum allowable height within the first 20 feet of the front setback area.
So I drove by today, the poles are up, but not the fencing?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay, I'm calling them poles, sorry. That way everybody, everybody understands.
It's easier to call them poles.
Huh?
I don't think he finished them all the way up.
But they haven't finished all the way up? Okay. Now, you said that you notified residents. Why did you do that? Why did you notify people in the area?
As a courtesy. That was a directive that we received from the CDC probably about two years ago.
Okay. That's, but it's not that, I'm, I'm just trying to get some understanding when we notify people of things versus not notifying them, because in the last ordinance, we didn't notify anybody. So that, I'm just.
Yeah, any discretionary item that has to come before the CDC, we notify those that are in the immediate vicinity. And then, and then the regular public notice, notices are mailed out per code, which is a 300-foot radius from the boundaries of the subject site.
Now, why, what, why do they need to have a higher fence right there? I mean, I've, I've driven around there, I mean, is it just for aesthetic purposes? What's the, I don't know why we have to grant them a variance.
I think the primary reason is.
It's not, it's been like, that property's been there for years.
The primary reason is to secure that swimming pool in the backyard. And it is in the zoning ordinance that a minimum five-foot-high fence be provided along the, around the perimeter of the site to secure that.
And where that fence, just an additional comment to what you're saying, where that fence intersects with the back fence, that back fence is six feet tall. So it's taller than the front fence.
And that's along the rear property line, just for clarification.
Was the pool there, or was the pool no?
The pool is there, yes. Was it there? And that was part of a bigger renovation project that the property owner had gone through.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff?
I just wanted to clarify, I want to make sure I've got my facts right. We have no letters of support or opposition to this project?
The property owner, I did request that the property owner notify, or at least give his neighbors a heads-up that this project was going to require a variance. He was able to secure, and it's part of your packet, secured two letters of support. He did attempt to make contact with the other neighbors, but they were, one or two of them were on vacation and the other ones were out of town.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? And if so, please step to the podium.
I live right across the street. And the, the proposed project will actually beautify that corner. And I really would love to have you pass it. And his, his purpose is to protect the pool, like he has to. If he, if he has set the, the fence back, it won't look as nice as, as planned right now. So I encourage you to pass it.
Thank you. Go blue. Any other comments?
One question of staff.
Okay. Okay, council members, is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, so city manager said that it was two variances, but there's only one.
The height of the fence and the, and the moving.
And setback.
Okay, we combined it into one, though. Okay.
Any other discussion by staff?
One question. Do we, have we considered the width of the roadway as it pertains to, I know that there's been some debate and discussion with a prior council and under a different city manager about Loma and traffic getting through there. Is that, is the width of that area of Loma taken into consideration, or excuse me, Mesa, rather? Has that been considered as far, is it setback far enough so that if we need to widen the road, for instance, we're not going to have to?
It's within his property line.
Okay.
So it's 20 feet within his property line. So if we were to widen the road, we would have to deal with that because it would be his property.
Perfect.
Right.
Just want to make sure we don't.
There's a difference there.
I'm just trying to look out in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion?
A move, approval.
Second.
Second, third.
A motion, a second? Okay, please record your vote. Steve?
Passed by a five-zero vote.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that passes by a five-zero vote.
Well, now consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Item 13, please.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved for approving the remainder.
Oh, approving the remainder? Okay, second. Okay, please vote.
Passed by a five-zero vote.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 13, the fiscal year 1718 storm drain damage, decomposed granite trail, notice of completion.
I just wanted to ask some questions about that. I personally received some inquiries from residents in the area of Saravella, wondering what that work was and wanted to have a, another discussion about that. And it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is damage due to the January 2017?
Yes.
Rainstorm event, the disaster event that the federal government declared, then apparently said, "We're not going to pay you much on it."
Actually, they reimbursed us for this. We are receiving.
But they did reimburse us for this, just not the Mesa Henderson storm drain.
Yes, sir.
And then, isn't there a portion of it that's being paid for with AQMD money?
Yeah, because the bids are slightly higher, the FEMA pays 75%. So basically, the difference between what FEMA's paying and we're covering with AQMD monies, which are for purposes of, of reducing emissions of transportation by trail, would be considered appropriate.
Is there any city money being put, put forth on this item, or is this just the FEMA and AQMD money?
FEMA and AQMD.
Okay. And is there any, there was no proposal to extend concrete sidewalks or anything? This is just repairing the DG trail, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on the?
I so moved.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second. Please cast your vote.
Passed by a five-zero vote.
Very good. Okay. Now I move on to new business. Our first item of new business is the award of a contract for the catch basin debris screens for Phase III installation project. Staff, please provide the staff report.
You'll recall, this is part of a phased process that we go through to clean our catch basins. Akram is here to, the city engineer, is here to give you a brief staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as the city manager mentioned, it is a Phase III of the installation of filters, catch basin, within the catch basins. And this project is being funded by Major M. from OCTA. And we do have originally the grant we submitted is for a project that is $200,000. However, after reviewing all the remainder of the catch basin that needs filters, we felt only the, the cost of it has, went down tremendously, and it's only about $100,000. So we're recommending that we award the contract to BioClean Environmental, who did the first two phases of the project. And they are a authorized contractor by OCTA, and their materials are approved. And with that, be recommending that the city council award the contract. And if there's any questions, be glad to answer.
How many bids did we get?
Really, it's, we're using BioClean since they've been using, they've installed the previous ones, Phase I and Phase II. And as I mentioned, they are authorized.
OCTA sets pre-approved contracts. So they basically go through and pre-authorize you to use certain vendors. So we're just selecting this vendor because we've used them before. It's, they're, they basically have done a bidding process to make sure that all materials and standards and bids are up to specifications. So OCTA, since they're the funder, we're just using their list and saying, "Okay, we're doing it." Now here, we've used the same, same contractor for the previous two phases, so they've done satisfactory job, so we're just saying, "Okay, we're just going to go ahead and move forward on that."
Council members, do you have any further questions of staff? Okay, is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Okay. Do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Please vote.
That passes by a five-zero vote.
Okay, our next item of new business is the award of a contract for the Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Replacement Project. Staff, please give the staff report.
You'll recall, this is the other element that we've been talking about that has been a result of the storms that we had in January of 2017. As the storm drain failed, a corrugated metal piping failed, and there was work done. We, you'll recall, we reinforced it. We have spent considerable time with FEMA, and I will say, with, within the last week, I've been told it's still under deliberation by FEMA, and I've talked to them directly. We're now dealing with our third or fourth, I don't want to say, we're at pretty high management level, so I've gone as high as I can go. But basically, we have received no funding. This is the bid. We went out, we designed, you recall, we did the design specifications. This would be reinforced, concrete piping that we'll be putting in for purposes of an alternate bid. We had the opportunity to do reinforced, we went out, and FEMA will only replace as-is. So we also did that as a base bid. So they came back, and from a, from a longevity perspective, et cetera, we felt that the reinforced concrete bid was, was the most appropriate way to go. Secondarily, the bids came in at a much lower amount than we previously had budgeted. So we are, than we anticipated. That's largely due to the amount of the scoping and what was done on the project itself. So we have, the low bid is for Big Ben Incorporated. There were four bids. Those are summarized, and the, the bidding prices are there. We have done our research, the, to do the background checks, and these people have done sufficient work elsewhere. So we see no reason not to recommend low bid. It is a public works project, and so we recommend awarding it to Big Ben at this time. Should this be the case, in the council, we would expect that work will begin hopefully in August, and we would be completed in September. Is that right, Akram?
That is correct.
So this is the long-awaited project, and I know the property owner is here, and I know she's very excited.
Okay. Well, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Does this also include the construction management piece of it?
No, that, that's, we have additional, that's why we have additional monies, but we'll be doing a construction management on top of that.
Okay.
But we'll be going ahead with the project at this point, so.
Right.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item?
I'm very excited.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to compliment the staff for their diligence on this project, and I'm very pleased to hear that we'll be able to afford replacement with reinforced concrete pipe. It'd be a shame if we had to install corrugated metal pipe, kick the can down the road another 50 years, and let some future city council have to deal with another collapsed storm drain. So it's best to fix it right the first time. Do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I've got a motion in a second. Please cast your vote.
That passes by a five-zero vote.
You're not the only one applauding here. Our next item of new business is the award of a contract for the general plan update. Staff, please give the staff report.
As you'll recall, we are, we submitted the housing element to HCD. The state notified us that their housing element was approved, but at the same time, they said, "You do need to bring, before your next housing element update is submitted in four years, you need to update your general plan to ensure that's in full compliance with other state laws and provisions." Subsequent to that, we went out to bid to secure, somebody to do the general plan update. We received two bids, the one being twice the amount of the second. So we, the current bid is, the low bid, I'm sorry, is with the current, the firm consultant, Hunter and Associates, that did our housing element. So they're very familiar with them. You're familiar with the consultant. He's been here, so that's $18,000. It's basically half the price of the other bid. So we're recommending approval of that and moving forward on the general plan update, which will need to be completed within the next three years or so prior to submittal of our housing element update.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, see none. Do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'm over approval.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Please record your vote.
That passes by a five-zero vote.
Our next item of new business is the fiscal 1718 street rehabilitation project change order number one. Staff, please give a report.
You'll recall that just last month, on May 22nd, we awarded the contract to RJ Noble to, to complete our major street rehabilitation project, and we'll be moving forward on that. That was a rather large project with 19 streets, as we've talked about earlier this evening, and money's budgeted. You'll also note that over the course of the years, we have budgeted, this year in particular, we budgeted $40,000 for street maintenance and repair items. Specifically, those would be like crack sealing, potholes, and things like that. Well, one of the thoughts has occurred to me, and I've heard from all five council members that we need to address some of our street cracking to preserve our long-term, you know, street says longer. So while it's not completely repairing the streets, it does deal with some streets and allows us a time. So the thought occurred to me that we ought to be using those, part of the contract for RJ Noble, they do crack sealing and street repair as part of it. That's what they do for a living. That's their job. So what I thought was, we would apply this $40,000 specifically for crack sealing repairs and those type of activities, and get the best bang for our buck. While they're already staging their staff, getting them in the city and moving, we can do some other street repairs, et cetera. While not complete repairs of the streets, we can do some sealing, et cetera. So from that perspective, this would allow us to move forward. So I'm recommending that we go ahead and use that and provide a change order with RJ Noble to allow us to move forward on that $40,000 to do it.
Okay, do you have any question? Council members, do you have any questions of staff? So I understand that we're just going to be doing street maintenance, which is crack sealing, but we're not going to be repairing any structural failures throughout the city?
No, no, correct. This will be a, this will be the, the street, the cracks, we have weeds growing, and each one of you at different times has come to me and said, "I got a, I got a resident that's complained about cracks or things that happened in there. We're trying to address those and allow us to do it in an extremitious manner."
Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none, do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
A move, we approve.
Second.
Okay, please cast your vote.
That passes by a five-zero vote.
Our next item of new business is the inspection construction management services contract for the fiscal 1718 sewer rehabilitation project. Staff, please give your report.
You'll recall that this is the sewer rehab project that's budgeted, and we've already let the contract with, I believe it's Ramona Incorporated that's doing the bid, doing our work that was awarded. We also then told the council at the time, we would be going out to bid and getting a construction manager to serve alongside and make sure they're doing the work right appropriately. We went out to bid, and since one of the bidders was in fact our, the firm that provides currently engineering, I took care of the bid and opened the bids myself. I didn't allow any staff elsewhere to do it. And we sat in while I opened them, and we compared notes, et cetera. So this is, NV5 is the low bid. They are significantly lower, $66,536. And the Councilman Nelson pointed out that. councilman Nelson pointed out that we had a typo in the fourth paragraph where we made it 696,000, that's an error. It is 66,536, for clarification. And, and we recommend awarding the contract to NV5, and since it is a, the same firm, I will be handling all the invoicing and billing myself, I'll be approving them, it won't be done through, it wouldn't be done by Akram, our city engineer, at this point. This is the contract manager, who we're making sure the work is being done appropriately.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? See none, do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, please record your vote.
Okay, that passes by a five zero vote.
Okay, our last item of new business is the membership in the Orange County Fire Authority Joint Powers Authority. Staff, please provide your report.
In discussions that have come up over the course of the last couple months, I wanna say, there's been a lot of discussion about the fire authority and Irvine, the city of Irvine, potentially giving notice to this Orange County Fire Authority. Under the terms of the agreement that the JPA, we are part of what they call a structural fire fund, and we have the opportunity to, if we notice, give notice, we would have the same opportunity that Irvine did by the end of this month to give notice. Essentially, that would mean that by 2020, we would opt out of the fire authority. Just for clarification, and just to give you an update, the Irvine City Council this evening voted three to one to give notice to the fire authority to, to leave. So they hope that they'll continue discussions, but they're leaving. We are in a very different situation than Irvine is, there's a lot of complications and issues with respect to Irvine leaving. We have no fire stations within our city boundaries, we have no assets, and we have, in the past, I believe it was 2010, 2012, somewhere in that range, the city looked at alternate providers and really received no interest of significance from, from surrounding cities, Orange or Anaheim. So at this point in time, I'm just looking to affirm that it's my recommendation that we stay with the fire authority, it is my understanding and talking to the finance director of the fire authority, that should Irvine leave, they do believe that they're able to still provide adequate levels of service, and they will still maintain themselves. That's from, hearing from Lori Zeller, so I'll put her name on the record, just, you know, I told her that I would do so. The other issue you may have heard of is Placentia has given notice. They're an entirely different classification of city, in that they're a cash contract city. We have our property taxes taken directly to, from us, to the tax collector, and then they're distributed to the fire authority. We never see them, we never see the bill, we never see anything, and it's set by a formula. So we don't, we don't get to control that formula, we don't get to control, all we do is have a voice in the level of service by having a member in the fire authority. Most recently, it was the mayor, Pro Tem Rosini, but in the past, councilman Nelson served on that. So the way this, they're a cash contract city, in other words, they pay for the services like the sheriff pays for the services. So they have a cap, the way it works in, in Placentia, in the cash contract cities, of four and a half percent increase in growth each year. So if costs go up more than four and a half percent, they don't have to pay any more than four and a half percent on the cash. So I, I don't, I haven't done the math, I haven't validated it, but they're in a different position, and depending on who you talk to, Placentia's either getting a really good deal, or basically, they think they can get a better deal. I, I don't know the answer, but they're a cash contract, we don't have that luxury. Our property taxes don't come to us. So I sort of look at this as a different way than maybe Placentia. We get our fire services complaint, taken care of, we don't get the bill, and we get to do a say-so about the level of service. So I think, in some ways, it's a very good deal, as long as the fire authority remains stable and a financial viable service. We get very good service, I believe, from the fire authority, I appreciate all they do, and we, basically, I just wanna make sure the council's in line with my line of thinking. So we have the option, I didn't want the time to pass without you knowing that. So the vote tonight, from my perspective, would be to reaffirm that we're gonna remain with the fire authority. I know the mayor, Pro Tem, sits on the, on the fire authority board, and he and I've talked about this, but I'll let him, Bill, any thoughts he has?
I wanna just echo what Steve said. It's frankly not feasible for us to leave the fire authority if we were, if we desired to do so. I think frankly it would be foolish, we would get an inferior level of service, given what we're paying. I think the brave men and women of the Orange County Fire Authority have done a fantastic job by our residents. I'd like to thank the command staff and our, the finance director, Chief Zeller, for entertaining numerous questions about this matter and a number of issues facing us in Orange County. I think my colleague, councilman Nelson, would echo concerns obviously about pension reform, and I think the Orange County Fire Authority, through their snowball plan, is doing an excellent job of trying to deal with unfunded liabilities. They're, they're being very, very prudent stewards of that. Obviously, service is, is the key thing. As Steve stated, there's a formula that predetermines what we're gonna pay. We don't have any say-so in that. So, in, in support of that, I visited our local station and met with firefighters, expressed our thanks, but also did an audit of the facilities. And frankly, the facilities and the fire engines aren't where they need to be, and I'm working with Chief Zeller and the command staff to hopefully get them to where they need to be. And frankly, I was obviously disappointed moving into this community to find out that we had a fantastic volunteer fire force that more or less was disassembled. I welcome volunteers, I really appreciate the Orange County Fire Authority and what it's done for all of Orange County, they're very, very brave, and they're, they're a great group. And I, and I sincerely suggest that we stay with the fire authority, I think it's the best deal for us as residents and all of Orange County as a whole. Thank you.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? See none, do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, please record your vote.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Thank you again for all you do for our community. We really appreciate all the hard work and everything you do for us. Keep us safe.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will discuss the city manager report.
In the interest of brevity, I'll just indicate I'm available to answer any questions. The item has been, has been updated, and items in red would indicate changes from last council meeting.
Just one comment, I see a lot of them being completed, so thank you for that. I noticed, we put a lot of workload on you since you started here, and I appreciate, I looked at the report, I have some questions, but I'll take them offline with you. But I do appreciate the fact that you're knocking these things off. I just, again, caution council, be careful with the resources that we have in overloading our staff with initiatives that we may or may not be needing to do. So I, I look for your direction, Steve, and give us that direction. If we come to you with something that we, is probably meaningless, or something we shouldn't be working on, please step up and tell us.
Now it's time to hear individual council member information items, starting with council member Pitts, do you have any reports or comments to share?
Just a couple things. My wife and I had the honor and pleasure of, on behalf of the Rotary, providing and serving dinner at the Orange Ronald McDonald House on June 21st. It did my heart really well to, to be able to do that, because I saw a lot of smiles on faces that deal with a lot of pain on a daily basis. And it was, and I know councilwoman Fastinelli has done similar work with, with the same group of people, and it just does my heart good to, and it felt really good to be there for the three hours that we were there, and watching the smiles on the kids' faces, and oh boy, it's barbecue night, so you know, it's, a lot of, a lot of what they see is pasta and salad, so I think it was, you know, we had some good old hearty mac and cheese, and, and baked beans, and, and chicken, and pulled pork from Dicky's. And I tell you, Dicky's did an amazing job on the food, number one. Number two, they donated part of that dinner to, to the Rotary and to Ronald McDonald House, 'cause it was more expensive than what we had budgeted for in the Rotary. So I really do appreciate Dicky's, give a shout-out for them, and if you get a chance to go and, and take part with their food, please do so. And then on the same night, Elizabeth and I attended the Villa Park Rotary Demotion Party for outgoing President Chad Zimmerman and incoming President Mark Heard. I wanna extend my personal gratitude to Chad, he did an amazing job leading the Rotary here in Villa Park this past year, and I look forward to what Mark has planned for us for this year coming. There's a lot of work that we do in the local communities, as well as internationally in this organization, and I enjoy doing a lot of work with, with that, with that group. Last but not least, I, I know we owe some, well, not last but not least, I know we, we owe you all some dates for the Villa Park Boat Parade and, and Senate Tour and things like that, and I promise you, it's on the agenda tomorrow night, I'm, if I have anything to do with it, it'll be published after that. Also, I want to make sure that we, we've got the Fourth of July coming up, we've got the Fourth of July Parade that's being sponsored by Hillary, and also put on by the Villa Park Community Service Foundation. Lineup starts at 8:30 a.m., and the parade starts at nine, so encourage everybody to come out and join us and have a good time, and take part in the parade, ride your bicycles, you're welcome to sit in my lawnmower and ride in my trailer if you want to, but I'll haul you around the city in the parade, but it's a fun thing, so look forward to it.
Thank you. Councilman Rosini, do you have any reports?
I just wanted to thank Villa Park Elementary School and Orange Unified School District for such a fantastic school bell dedication. I was able to attend the event on May 29th with councilman Nelson, as well as Mayor Colacott. I think Mayor Colacott gave some very, very kind and thoughtful words, and inspirational, and the kids that were there really were just absolutely amazing. Just to see the impact that, that monument of sorts provided, it was, it was wonderful seeing the community come together, and I really appreciate the invitation. Couple other things, attended the Public Works Committee on June 15th, and then the budget, budget study session on June 5th, and then, Robbie, you stole my thunder on National Night Out.
Oh, excuse me.
But that's okay. I'm glad you actually promoted it, because, correct me if I'm wrong, final date, August 7th.
Yes, sir.
August 7th, in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. I welcome everybody to come on down and meet with their local law enforcement, it's truly a national night where community policing and just the community in and of itself can get together and understand what law enforcement does, what they can better do to make themselves safe in their home, and take care of their neighbors, and work with law enforcement, and make our tremendous community even better. And then July 4th, I've been talking to Steve quite a bit, and Gretchen Ferris, wanna thank her for all the work that she's putting into this, I know we're working with the Sheriff's Department to make sure we have enough staffing to take care of intersections, and I will too, I too will be there like I was last year, and hopefully my daughter won't try to run over any band members this year, so thank you, and I look forward to seeing y'all out there.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fastinelli, do you have any reports?
No.
No reports? Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, Rosini stole all of my thunder. For the school bell dedication that I attended, that's the only thing I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do, would like to comment about the school bell dedication. On May 29th, I represented the city at the dedication of the school bell at Villa Park Elementary. And in my presentation, I reviewed the close ties between the school, which was founded in 1881, and I understand it may be the oldest school in the county, in our community. Originally, our school was named Villa Mountain View School, and our, because of that, our community became known as Mountain View, until it was found that a Mountain View already exists in the Bay Area when our community applied for a post office. So the, seeking another name, we, the community became known as Villa Park, and then the school changed its name to Villa Park School. And back in the day, Villa Park School covered grades one through nine, not just elementary. In the early 1980s, Orange Unified School District proposed closing Villa Park Elementary, and that was, I moved to Villa Park in 1981, and one of the first items I remember hearing about was this proposal to close Villa Park Elementary. However, our Villa Park Women's League stepped forward and led a very successful effort to retain our historic school, and the school's bell represents the close ties that the school and our community have shared for almost 140 years. The, the dedication ceremony was well-attended, and I'd especially like to thank Mark Couli for his efforts. He led the way in the restoration of the school bell and the development of the monument on which it's mounted. And I'd also like to thank the, the city council for contributing to the, the effort, as well as the Orange Unified School District. Go, stop by Villa Park Elementary, it's where, they now have a very beautiful plaza that, the centerpiece is the school bell. Let's see, on June 3rd, I attended the annual Rotary event in Anaheim, and this event was very well-attended, a lot of, saw a lot of good people there from Villa Park. And, let's see, then on June 13th, federal judge Carter requested that all mayors and city managers to appear in his courtroom at the federal courthouse in San Ana. And Mr. Franks and I attended, and we got a lot of good information about what the federal judge and his perspectives on the cities and the county working to address the homeless situation in Orange County. Now, the highlight of the month, on June 23rd, I was honored to attend the 80th birthday party of our very own councilman, Bill Nelson. In addition to a great barbecue, I had the opportunity of meeting Bill's lovely family, some who, whom traveled as far as Manhattan and the Capitol to attend. It was a really nice event, Bill's got a lovely family, had a wonderful time, good food, and happy birthday, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if that is there, a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting on July 24th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m.?
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.